2018, it is 6:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cuff.
Present.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Councilmember Shipley.
Yes.
And Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. We will now open it up to public participation. Any member of the public wishes to make public comments on agenda items or items that are not on the agenda, please do so at this time. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and Councilman. I have a letter that I'd like to present to the council for their review. And I've already sent a copy to Mr. Landon, but there's another copy here. Can I do that at this time?
Please do. Did you just want to present the letter, sir? Did you just want to present the letter?
Present the letter for your review.
Okay, thank you. Can you say?
You should.
Thank you so much. Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Life is like a baseball. You get one chance to hit the ball. If you're lucky, you hit a homerun and you may even win the game. You may walk on a wild pitch or you may strike out. I feel this city is trying to strike me out. This city team consists of the following players. Mayor Holland is the commissioner. The council is the owners. The supervisors are the managers and the city manager is the umpire. Well, let's start the game. Back in September, I requested a meeting with Barbara Grossman, code enforcement, Councilwoman Nobiel, and myself. The umpire called strike one when he said that I refused to sit down with the council. Well, strike two came in December of 2017 when then owner Cuff was the vice mayor and he told the umpire to have a meeting after the holidays. Well, six holidays have now since passed and no meeting. Well, now I realize that I've got to do something or I'm going to be out of this game. So I scheduled on my own a manager's meeting with Barbara Grossman this past Thursday. Well, she came with all of her coaches. Everybody and everybody was at this meeting. And I ended up getting a lesson on code enforcement 101. The city now wants to charge me $24.95 an hour to get the information that I should have gotten for free. Well, if the umpire had played fairly, I would have got the information for free. Now I'm staring at a third strike. So now I have only a split second to decide which way I'm going to go because I already know that the owners, the manager, and the umpire just want me to sit down and be quiet. Well, the problem is that even if I paid the $24.95 per hour, the umpire still decides what information I'm going to get and when. So I've decided, and I'm hoping that you will too, that the umpire has to go. You chose to let him stay in the game. Well, that was your first strike. The owners now must decide, are they going to keep the same umpire or change the type of government and go to a city-run council or you're going to get your second strike? Well, if you don't change, that will be your third strike because I promise you that the fans will replace the owners. And they may be taking years, but one by one, we're going to have to replace the owners. And then the game will finally be played fair and more importantly, by the rules. Now I'm going to take my baseball and I'm going to go sit down and I'm going to wait the outcome of the game.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Florida Park Drive is a constant speed zone. Speeding is every day. So we would, residents over there would either like three-way stop signs, humps or stops or humps or there's any number of what they call traffic common devices out there. So we just asked the city to check into that and see which ones that would help reduce the speeding on Florida Park Drive. Why is it so much speeding? Well, there's 8,600 cars per day on Florida Park Drive. Three million plus cars per year. Just 60 feet from children's bedrooms. Just 80 feet from Holland Park Basketball Court. Now, anybody that can do a Google search on close proximity to traffic to homes will find out how much harm that is doing to the children, the residents. The World Health Organization, Environmental Protective Agency, Center for Disease Control, universities around the world, many in the United States, have written so many articles about the dangers of the harm of the traffic fumes, the traffic dust, the traffic noise, and what it does, what kind of harm it does to children. So not only are we asking for the city to do something about the speeding, we're also asking them to do something about the volume of traffic. Florida Park Drive was, is a collector drive for the F-section. But it has been used not only for a collector drive for the F-section, but for the sections of traffic that are east of the canal now come across the canal and go down Florida Park Drive. So we're not just a F-section collector road. We ended up being a multi-section collector road. That's why we have 3 million cars per year. That's why there's 8,600 cars per day. This is according to the FDOT website. So please look into what kind of common devices can be used on Florida Park Drive to reduce the speeding and also look to find out how we can reduce the amount of traffic on Florida Park Drive. The fumes, the dust, the noise are horrific. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comments.
My name is Eugene Holland. I live at 46 Cross Thai Court here in Palm Coast. We've been here some 20 years. And my purpose in being here tonight is to bring to the council's attention the very deplorable conditions at the town park. The vast majority of visitors to the park are senior citizens. Many of them have difficulty navigating and the conditions do not make things easier for them. The conditions that do exist invite serious legal actions. The Dog Park is a calamity ready to happen. Each Monday and Friday from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, the park is closed presumably for maintenance. I have, aside from lawn cutting, in all the times I've been there, which is daily, I've never seen any maintenance whatsoever. And the Dog Park is, the conditions are representative of that comment. Calls and memos to the Department of Parks Director go unanswered and ignored. I have asked the people who cut the lawns and empty the trash baskets, when are these conditions going to be addressed? I get a shrug. I don't know. I only do what I'm told. Know my job, in other words. I have some photos here that I will share with you guys. I ask you, please, just keep them in order because I'm going to make comments. Unfortunately, I only have five copies, one, two, three, four, five copies, if you don't mind.
Keep going, sir. We'll look at those. Keep going.
Well, okay. Picture number one shows a sprinkler head that has been exposed for months, many months. And I wonder sometimes why, when they do their maintenance, nobody reports this to anyone. Number two shows the floor of the gazebo. And you'll see there's a man standing there and underneath him, there's a 12 to 15.
You have three seconds left.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Well, okay, I'm going to leave you with this and maybe you guys will look at it.
Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close public comments. Mr. McDonald, thank you for your comments. I understand you had a meeting with Barbara Grossman. Mr. Carr, thank you for your comments. And as far as Mr. Holland, these pictures will be in the public record. I would ask our City Parks and Rec Department to address the issues within the photos.
I think he's talking about a county park, but we can forward it on to the county park.
Okay. Is this a county park?
I didn't catch the name. I don't know if anybody else caught that. I think he's talking about Wadsworth Park. That's a county park and not ours.
That's what it looks like.
Yep.
The dirt.
Just make sure you get confirmation.
We'll get, somebody will get a hold of him on his way out and try to address it.
Okay, we'll now move to agenda item number one, which is approval of the minutes on March 20th, 2018, business meeting, and March 27th, 2018 workshop. Entertain a motion?
Move approval. Second?
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number two is a proclamation on the Fair Housing Month. Vice Mayor Cuff will be reading this proclamation. Whomever's in the audience to receive it, please come up to the podium.
Whereas April 11th, 2018, marks the 50th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, and national origin, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas the Flagler County Association of Realtors is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help ensure everyone of their right to fair housing. And whereas the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all realtors to provide equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by Palm Coast Mayor Melissa Holland and the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, April 2018 be officially designated Fair Housing Month in the City of Palm Coast and begins a year-long commemoration of the Fair Housing Act and urge all citizens to wholeheartedly recognize this celebration throughout the year. Signed, this third day of April 2018, City of Palm Coast Melissa Holland, Mayor.
Dorothy Devosberg representing the Flagler County Association of Realtors. And I want, I really appreciate the city council's endeavors and efforts to help us to support and keep fair housing in the outline and there for everyone. This year, we're celebrating, as we stated in there, 50 years of the Fair Housing Act. And on the April 14th, that Saturday, in conjunction with the city as well, we'll be hosting a fair housing seminar. And it will be held at the city council from 10 to 3:00. So we'd like for everyone to join us, stop by, and see what actually fair housing is all about. Thank you again very much for your support.
Thank you for your efforts. Agenda item number three is a proclamation on Crime Victims Rights Week. And Councilmember Shipley will be presenting. Anyone that's receiving, please come front to the podium.
Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year and crimes can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or economic status. And whereas the victim services community has worked for decades to create an environment for victims that is safe, supportive, and effective. And whereas intervening early with services that support and empower victims provides a pathway to recovery from crime and abuse. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social services systems. And whereas serving victims and rebuilding their trust restores hope to victims and survivors as well as their communities. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime, even those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, does hereby declare April 8th through April 14th, 2018, as Crime Victims Rights Week. Adopted this third day of April 2018, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Melissa Holland, Mayor.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Ficciello with the Flagler Beach Police Department Victim Services. And as president of the Flagler County Advocate Alliance, I am pleased to accept this proclamation for National Crime Victims Rights Week. And I'd also like to thank the City of Palm Coast for your continued support for crime victims' rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, okay. I'm going to do the proclamation recognizing the month of April as the National Mayor's Whereas the City of Palm Coast and the entire state of Florida continue to explore ways to manage residential consumption of water and power and to inspire citizens to care for our national resources, natural resources. And whereas cities, including Palm Coast, can engage in efforts to inspire their own city as well as neighboring communities to become better environmental stewards. Whereas the 7th Annual National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation presented by the Wyland Foundation and Toyota will support the U.S. EPA Water Sense, the Toro Company, National League of Cities, Conserve irrigation, and earth-friendly products makers of ECOS, is a healthy nonprofit competition for cleaner communities and a water use and pollution reduction competition between our cities. Whereas with the engagement of Palm Coast Mayor Melissa Holland, residents may register their participation in our city's challenge online by making simple pledges to decrease their water use and to reduce pollution for the period of one year, thereby assisting their city to apply for state and federal water conservation strategies and to target mandated reductions. And whereas during the entire month of April 2017, the City of Palm Coast wishes to inspire its residents and its neighboring communities to take Wyland Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation by making a series of online pledges at, I'm going to say this twice, mywaterpledge.com, again, mywaterpledge.com, to reduce their impact on the environment and to see immediate savings in their water, trash, and electricity bills. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Palm Coast Mayor Melissa Holland and the City Council of the City of Palm Coast that the month of April 2017 be officially designated National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation Month in the City of Palm Coast and that all citizens are encouraged to take the challenge by April 30th. Signed, this third day of April 2017, Mayor Melissa Holland. So we just wanted to, again, really talk about what this pledge means. Your pledge will save 68,376 gallons of water.
That's mine.
That is your pledge. So that is Brian Matthews' pledge, who has taken the pledge. And so I encourage each and every one of our residents, our council members, our staff, everybody to come together as a community. So the results will reflect the month of April 1st to 30th, 2018. So are you number?
We, the city, are number eight.
So we are number eight as a city.
In our city standings.
And so.
In our population range.
So I would encourage every single person to actually come and take this pledge. Let's show the rest of the country what we feel strongly about, which is environmental, citizenship, conserving our water resources, and ensuring that water is protected for years to come with our future generations.
Very good.
Thank you again to our utility department. And again, I would encourage everyone to sign up. It really is a very critical issue for our community, our state, and our country. Our proclamation, agenda, presentation, agenda item number five is a presentation of unit citation to first responders.
Mayor, Chief Beadle is going to handle this special presentation tonight.
If I can get everybody up here.
Just need to offer them food and they'll come running away. I've seen most firefighters. Oh. I'll pay for that one tomorrow.
And the ump takes a point away.
Is it hot in here? Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you? It is a pleasure to be here this evening. Rather than me stand here and explain the course of events that we're here for, I'm going to let the crews and some of our guests that are coming up behind us, they're going to give you a little story and then we'll work from there. As we go through this, I just ask everybody to remember one thing, that not all first responders wear badges. Right? If you keep that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to paramedic Tom Bull, who is one of our team members from EMS team here in the department. You're up.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. It's really, it's a special opportunity to be able to come forward and kind of show off the hard work that we do. And, you know, in a situation like this, it's all the puzzle pieces that fell into place, you know? And yes, tonight, we're going to spotlight, you know, some of the people that were able to come in, but there's also a lot of other people that weren't able to show up that are a part of the crew as well. And like you said, not all heroes wear badges. So, you know, certainly, there's a time and a place when CPR is absolutely necessary and these folks were able to find that time and place. And so we're here to rejoice and congratulate and say thank you.
Lieutenant Driscoll?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I'm just going to give you a brief synopsis of what went down on that day and introduce you to some pretty remarkable people. As it pertains to this situation, when the heart stops, every second counts. This is especially true for one particular Palm Coast resident. On February 15th, 2018, this man reported to work at Sandvik. Prior to the start of his shift, he was experiencing some signs and symptoms of a heart attack, known medically as an acute myocardial infarction. His coworkers didn't realize anything was wrong until he collapsed and then called 911. At this time, his coworkers immediately recognized the signs of cardiac arrest and began CPR. Cardiac arrest is an electrical malfunction in the heart that causes an irregular heartbeat or the absence of one, also known as an arrhythmia. That disrupts the blood flow to the brain, lungs, and other vital organs. It is the leading cause of death with more than 350,000 cardiac arrests occurring out the person I am today because of their guidance. So I cannot stress enough how proud I am of the crew, specifically paramedic Graham, and her efforts of maintaining patient care. Even when the ambulance from Flagler County arrived, she accompanied the patient to the hospital and maintained that high level of care all the way, and it really makes me proud. Part of that, you guys can applaud. But none of this would have been possible if it weren't for the, this gentleman's coworkers at Sandvik. So at this point, I'd like to invite, I hope I don't mess these names up, guys, I apologize if I do. Nate Keif, Gene Kleinschmidt, Tricia Passionis, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Oh, sweet. And Lori Scorpio, and the rest of my crew to come forward. And I'd like to invite Palm Coast Mayor Melissa Holland and the Fire Chief to join us at the podium.
Now, the one person we forgot to introduce was himself. It's Lieutenant Dan Driscoll, who's in charge of this crew, as the mayor joins us. Tonight, I'd like to introduce somebody very, very important for this evening, the festivities, Serge Jordeau. Serge?
You look great.
That morning when Mr. Jordeau went to work at Sandvik on February 15th, never knowing how his life was about to change, likewise, his coworkers were standing behind us, reported for work that Thursday morning, not, they too, not realizing what was about to happen, especially when the 911 call went out and the crew showed up on Engine 21. Because of their extraordinary chain of events, Mr. Jordeau is here today as one of the 10%, as was told, of the people to survive an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. With the assistance of the mayor, we'd like to honor our heroes tonight, beginning with the Sandvik employees, and if you would be so kind as to help us make those presentations, would you like to say anything?
No.
I got it. I'm the same way. I don't like to speak in front of crowds either.
Nate?
Lori? I'm just going with your first name. He got the mic. Jean? You must be Tricia. On behalf of the Palm Coast Fire Department, the men and women, and all your relatives sitting behind us, I know there's family members here, congratulations on the lifesaving award. You are true first responders. And of course, in the Fire Department, we have to give them glitzy things to put on their uniforms, so on behalf of the Department, a commendation, firefighter paramedic Caitlin Graham. Driver engineer Adam Bachman. Lieutenant Dan Driscoll. Again, not everybody that's considered a first responder and a hero wears a badge, so thank you very much.
Up or down?
I think we should put Serge in the mouth.
Yep. You have no choice.
You know, I really do want to thank our first responders, but also our community as a whole. Oftentimes, our first responders provide such a great service for that immediate need, but they also do a lot of training outside of just running into burning buildings or providing medical treatment, offering CPR classes, ensuring child safety. So we really do owe a great recognition to our first responders, but thank you all for being on the scene and saving this unbelievable resident's life. Thank you.
Probably gonna have to make a couple of rows, so if the... Lori, you can come toward the front. Caitlin? All right, and if everybody can take a step, just a couple steps that way, so we can have the seal behind us. Okay, and can you see my face, everybody? Perfect, you're a good-looking group. Okay, on one, two, three, say Serge. One, two, three. We got a few more.
One right here?
Look at that.
Well, that was motivational.
It's firing.
So, council members, I know ordinarily on the consent agenda, we're not pulling these items unless the public speaks on them, but we do have an appointment tonight that I think warrants probably a photo and a recognition of our new appointee to our, as our cohistorian of the City of Palm Coast, Elaine Stednicki. So I'd like to offer this and move this up on the agenda, and to offer us to do a photo op of the new co-chair of the Palm Coast Historical Society, and I would love a motion to approve in a second.
Second?
Everybody second.
Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. If you come up and do a photo with us.
Most people probably know this, Mayor, but Art Dyke is our current city historian that's joining you too, so now they're cohistorians.
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Congratulations.
And I understand your family's here tonight, so welcome, and thank you for lending, lending her to us as far as the cohistorian. It's a really important role, and we look forward to our future relationship and partnership with the Palm Coast Historical Society. Thank you. Agenda item number six, which is an ordinance. I get to stop talking for a while.
Mayor, I'll talk for a little bit. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, order providing for the first amended and restated master plan development, or MPD, Development Agreement, for the grand landings, MPD. This ordinance provides for an amendment to Section 6B1, wetland and wetland buffer, and Section 7A, site development plan, provides for a reduction in minimum lot width for single-family detached to 45 feet wide, providing for a minimum, a reduction in minimum lot size for a single-family detached to 5,000 square feet. This ordinance provides for legislative findings and intent for conflicts for severability and provides for an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, this is a second reading. We don't have anything else that's new. I'll just highlight that this is a very minor amendment for grand landings, which is located down in the southern portion of the community off of Seminole Woods. This really just allows this development to have the same criteria for wetlands as in our current code. It also allows for fire mitigation, which we encourage in wetlands, and then also it allows for smaller lot sizes, but the house, minimum house sizes stay the same. So it's very consistent with our current emphasis on trying to diversify housing but still maintain the neighborhood. So we feel like it does that. We believe it's ready for final approval at this time after public comment.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item before I open it to the public? Any member of the public wish to speak on Agenda Item Number Six? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda number eight is an ordinance.
Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, order submitting to the electors of Palm Coast proposed amendments to the charter of the City of Palm Coast, which shall be considered by ballot, providing ballot titles and summaries of the proposed charter amendments, providing for direction to the city clerk for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date for the ordinance and for the approved amendments.
Mayor, City Council, this is also a second reading, but been a very lengthy process, and City Council has heard presentations numerous times, as you can see from the schedule up here. After much discussion and meetings, there are three proposals that this ordinance would address for our charter. First is just an update and getting rid of some of the out-of-date information in the current charter, and also bringing it up to date with state laws that have changed since it was originally adopted in 2000, or 1999, actually. It also revises the process for future review of city charter. It requires a charter committee to be appointed by city council at least once every 10 years, advisory committee, that gets rid of that ambiguous language as to, do you have to have a charter review committee or not? Makes it very clear that you do, and at least once every 10 years. And then lastly, it indicates that right now you have 30 days to fill a vacancy if a council member either resigns or can't fill their seat before the term is up, even if that's 60 days from elections, we found recently with Mr. McGuire. So what this does is it says that if the vacancy occurs within six months of an election, then you do not have to make an appointment. The election would just, voters would elect the seat during the regular election. It also changes it to allow you 90 days, because 30 days, once, I mean, you gotta get applications, et cetera, 30 days, we found it being difficult. So this actually addresses a real-life situation that we believe is a good update. Those are the only changes. This is a second reading. Once again, you've discussed this many times. We believe it's ready for final adoption. It does not take place, I have to stress this, it's one of the reasons why I wanted to highlight it, is because what this ordinance does is place it on the ballot this November, and it will have to be, these will have to be approved by the voters. It will be three separate ballot measures, it's not one, it's actually three. So it's not adopted by your adoption of this ordinance, what you're doing tonight is actually placing it on the ballot for the voters to consider these three items.
Council, any questions or discussion before I open to the public? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Eight? Please do so at this time.
I'd like to know what it's gonna cost to put all this on the ballot, because I don't see anything that's so dire that it has to be done now and at a cost. You know, the charter is, it's written, it's ambiguous in some spots and not in others, but it tells us what we do, what we have to do, what we don't have to do. What you're doing is you're putting something on the ballot, and it's gonna cost us, I don't know what, $60,000, $70,000? Now, I can think of better ways of spending my money instead of doing a city charter. The people in this city don't even know you're gonna make a change of the city charter, so I don't, I don't see what you're gaining by it, and I don't see what the citizens are gaining by it, except losing a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm Mr. Neilabuck, I'm in the R section. I totally disagree with the gentleman. I think what you're doing is awesome, making this charter updated for future people and other representatives. It's needed, and the people are gonna decide, not you. So thank you for doing all this work on the charter.
We don't have anything else that's new. I'll just highlight that this is a very minor amendment for grand landings, which is located down in the southern portion of community off of Seminole Woods. This really just allows this development to have the same criteria for wetlands as in our current code. It also allows for fire mitigation, which we encourage in wetlands. And then also, it allows for smaller lot sizes, but the house, minimum house sizes stay the same. So it's very consistent with our current emphasis on trying to diversify housing, but still maintain the neighborhood. So we feel like it does that. We believe it's ready for final approval at this time after public comment.
Any questions or comments on this agenda item before I open it to the public? Any member of the public wish to speak on Agenda Item Number Six? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Seven is an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor. Counsel, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. Amending official zoning map for approximately 9.09 acres, more or less, of certain real property generally located at the northeast corner of Bulldog Drive and State Road 100, also known as Moody Boulevard, and more particularly described in the attached Exhibit A to the ordinance. Rezoning from general commercial or COM-2 zoning district and public semi-public or PSP zoning district to master plan development or MPD zoning district. This ordinance provides for conflicts, for severability, and provides for an effective date. Mayor, Council, this is a quasi judicial matter, and if you've had any ex parte communications since the first reading, those need to be disclosed.
Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, as you know, we consider this to be exciting, to see the redevelopment of the entrance into our downtown area. Some of us remember the old houses and the deteriorated neighborhood in that area that has taken quite some time to redevelop. This zoning allows for the Wawa that is being proposed at the corner of Bulldog Drive and State Road 100. It is still very consistent with our code, but recognizes the, some of the uniqueness of a redevelopment area. We believe the ordinance is ready for final approval at this time after public comment.
Council members, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll open it to the public. Any member of public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Seven? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Number Eight is an ordinance.
Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, submitting to the electors of Palm Coast proposed amendments to the Charter of the City of Palm Coast, which shall be considered by ballot, providing ballot titles and summaries of the proposed charter amendments, providing for direction to the city clerk for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date for the ordinance and for the approved amendments.
Mayor, City Council, this is also a second reading, but been a very lengthy process. And City Council has heard presentations numerous times, as you can see from the schedule up here. After much discussion and meetings, there are three proposals that this ordinance would address for our charter. First is just an update and getting rid of some of the out-of-date information in the current charter, and also bringing it up to date with state laws that have changed since it was originally adopted in 2000, or 1999, actually. It also revises the process for future review of city charter. It requires a charter committee to be appointed by city council at least once every 10 years, advisory committee, that gets rid of that ambiguous language as to, do you have to have a charter review committee or not? Makes it very clear that you do, and at least once every 10 years. And then lastly, it indicates that, right now, you have 30 days to fill a vacancy if a council member either resigns or can't fill their seat before the term is up. Even if that's 60 days from elections, we found recently with Mr. McGuire. So what this does is it says that if the vacancy occurs within six months of an election, then you do not have to make an appointment. The election would just, voters would elect the seat during the regular election. It also changes it to allow you 90 days, because 30 days, once, I mean, you gotta get applications, et cetera. 30 days, we found it being difficult. So this actually addresses a real-life situation that we believe is a good update. Those are the only changes. This is a second reading. Once again, you've discussed this many times. We believe it's ready for final adoption. It does not take place, I have to stress this. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to highlight it is because what this ordinance does is place it on the ballot this November, and it will have to be, these will have to be approved by the voters. It will be three separate ballot measures. It's not one, it's actually three. So it's not adopted by your adoption of this ordinance. What you're doing tonight is actually placing it on the ballot for the voters to consider these three items.
Counsel, any questions or discussion before I open to the public? Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Eight? Please do so at this time.
I'd like to know what it's gonna cost to put all this on the ballot, because I don't see anything that's so dire that it has to be done now and at a cost. You know, the charter is, it's written, it's ambiguous in some spots and not in others, but it tells us what we do, what we have to do, what we don't have to do. What you're doing is you're putting something on the ballot, and it's gonna cost us, I don't know what, $60,000, $70,000? Now, I can think of better ways of spending my money instead of doing a city charter. The people in this city don't even know you're gonna make a change of the city charter. So I don't, I don't see what you're gaining by it, and I don't see what the citizens are gaining by it, except losing a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm Mr. Neilabuck, I'm in the R section. I totally disagree with the gentleman. I think what you're doing is awesome, making this charter updated for future people and other representatives. It's needed, and the people are gonna decide, not you. So thank you for doing all this work on the charter.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
The only question was how much, and that depends on the ballot.
Cheers.
It's too early to know.
If it's more than one page, it would be a cost to us.
Right.
If it's not more than one page, there's no cost.
Right.
But nowhere near $60,000 or $70,000.
No, that was when we held our own elections he's referring to. This would just be the cost of printing the additional page, relatively low cost compared to holding a separate election.
Okay, council, entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Nine, ordinance.
Yes, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending Chapter 29 Impact Fees, Article 2 Transportation Impact Fees, Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Coast, to adjust rates based on a comprehensive study, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and for an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, this is a first reading. So this one, we actually have a presentation. First time we've had it in a business meeting, although you did have a couple of workshops early on with some preliminary information and then the proposal last week. Our transportation impact fees are intended to have development help pay for itself. As we know, you see new development, it increases traffic, and that increases the need for lanes. Impact fees can only be used for capacity improvements, adding capacity to the system. State law requires you to actually demonstrate by hiring accountants and, well, engineers who have background in the numbers and the details to make sure that the fees are consistent with reality as to what kind of impact each development, type of development will have. So, and you're required to review this periodically, and that's what's happening here. And I'm going to turn it over to Jose, and he will give you the background. I've been told it's a little shorter presentation than what you saw at workshop, but still trying to give an overview of what is being proposed. So Jose, take it from here.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Just as a reminder, our consultant team is at the desk with me, starting from the far right, Matthew West, Transportation Group. Sitting next to him is Jonathan Paul with New Urban Concepts. And sitting adjacent to me is Sands Lassiter with Lassiter Transportation Group. And they're the consultant team that prepared our, the new impact fee schedule. As Mr. Landon mentioned, this is an abbreviated presentation. Just to give you a background, we have gone through two City Council workshops to go over the land use schedule and the updated fee calculations. And as directed by council, we did meet with stakeholders and had follow-up meetings with stakeholders to discuss the proposed impact fee schedule and to address their concerns and answer any questions that they might have with the new impact fee schedule. As presented previously, the impact fee schedule that we're going to, we're proposing to adopt is really based on a road improvement program that takes into consideration the improvements that are necessary to accommodate traffic to 2040. And that total cost comes up to about $68 million, $68.3 million. So that would be the capital program on which our impact fee schedule and fees are based on. Probably the more important thing about this update of the impact fees is to show you where we have provided for some economic incentives with the new schedule. And that's based on input from our stakeholders and from direction provided by the City Council, such as, for one, identifying the infill lots, basically the historic ITT lots, and providing a separate impact fee for them to promote their development. This impact fee schedule provides for a diversity of housing choices by specifically calling out separate impact fees for single-family, multifamily, and a new category of, really a new category of active adult. We looked at the manufacturing rate. That would be for any use that would propose to do a manufacturing activity. Other things would be, in the calculation of that, the capital schedule, we did not include the cost of right-of-way. And as asked at the last workshop, Councilmember Cuff asked about, would the construct, would the costs that we have calculated accommodate any stormwater improvements? And we did review the schedule, and looking at the construction costs that were, that we, that were used for calculating the new impact fees, those construction costs could accommodate for the stormwater improvements. That's the stormwater ponds and the upgrade to an urban section of a roadway. As another incentive or incentive, we looked at the cost between doing intersection improvements versus a wholesale street widening project. And again, the identifications there is that intersection projects, which are typically lower in cost, would be appropriate and does add capacity to our system. The new impact fee makes a distinction between multi-tenant retail and freestanding retail. Again, identifying that a multi-tenant retail use, such as a shopping center, or one where you have two or three uses in one building, does provide for some internal capture of traffic that has less of an impact on our transportation network compared to one freestanding retail use.
What, if I may, Jose, what, how many units would constitute a multi?
Sure.
One, or?
It's three or more, I believe, is what we have.
Three or more, okay.
And some other things now, just some continuation, or what else is in the ordinance that's being proposed? One is that, consistent with the current ordinance, we will continue to maintain that there needs to be an annual adjustment to the impact fees based on FDOT construction costs. And just, that's just a matter of keeping up with the inflation cost. Another one is the ability to create a benefit district to fund specific improvements, again, through capturing dedicated impact fees within a particular area, and again, dedicating that to a particular road construction project within a specific benefit district. Previously, we update impact fees every six years. The new ordinance will propose that we update it every five years. And that's just really taking into account more of the volatility in funding sources and construction costs for roadways. And finally, for implementation, as we reviewed at workshop, the new impact fee schedule goes into effect 30 days for those impact fees that decrease. They go into effect 90 days if the impact fee increases, with some exemption for those projects that are in the pipeline, that if they're able to get a building permit by February 1, 2019, then they would have, they would be eligible to be, to be, for the lower impact fees, which are, if that's for, which are currently on the books right now.
One question, Jose.
Yes, sir.
On the FDOT annual adjustments, do they do that calculation each year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I believe it's September that they issue that, or?
Well, when they issue it.
It's actually August.
When do they do the actual comparison? Is it year to year?
It is.
Okay, so previous year to current year, and, okay.
It is, and they've been doing it for Jonathan Paul and New Urban Concepts. They've been doing this for over 20 years now, and they published it at the beginning of the year. And really, it helps local governments throughout the state, as well as Department of Transportation.
I just get concerned with, the last few years, we had a dramatic increase. And I just don't want that to carry year to year. That pretty much brought us back to where we should be. Now we should have normal inflation, and I don't want that calculated in. But once it's gone, you're saying it's done.
It is. And so finally, we're here at first reading. And if approved, then we will move on to second reading at your next business meeting. Over to the effective date, as previously described. And we are available to answer any questions that council might have.
Counsel, any further questions or? Okay, I'll open it to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Nine? Please do so at this time.
Just what is active adult? You know, you put something up there, and they say it's something new, but they don't tell us what it is. So I would like to know just what it is, what these people are being impacted for.
Thank you. Next speaker. Close public comment. Can I answer Mr. Carroll's question, please?
You want to take Jonathan, or I can do it?
Do you want to do it?
Very simply, active adult are communities that are 55 and over, or restricted to 55 and over. And the recognition there is that, within that type of community, you probably have less of a traffic impact, because not, maybe not all of them own vehicles, and maybe they don't go out 10 times a day like my family does, so. There's that.
You won't have teenagers driving all around.
And it does recognize that. So that's why that category is there.
Thank you. Okay, council, entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Nine.
Move approval, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 10, which is an ordinance.
Counsel, this is an ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 15, Building and Building Regulations, adopting local technical amendments to the Florida Building Code, providing a fiscal impact statement, providing for applicability, severability, for codification, for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, City Council, this is also a first reading. The presentation is going to address this ordinance and the next ordinance. You'll have to consider them separately, but they're tied together. Once again, this last fall, we got a lot of rain. It wasn't just the Hurricane Irma, but we had a northeast easter. I never say that right, but what they had those up there in the northeast so much this winter. We didn't have a lot of snow, but we sure had a lot of rain. But very proud of the fact that very little structural flooding. Had street flooding, definitely had some wind damage, the like. But that's, doesn't happen by accident. It happens because we have good rules and regulations. We also have a great relationship with the state and federal regulators that try to help make sure that we don't see a lot of flooding. And then they recognize us with the Code, and our Code of Ordinances regarding floodplain. Denise is going to highlight those changes, but I really want to emphasize what, a lot of, a lot of technical work has already gone into this, and how important this is for the community. So Denise, take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just for application purposes, this is regarding the item specific to Chapter 15 of the Florida Building Code and Chapter 10 of the Land Development Code. So this presentation's goal is to cover both items. Just as Mr. Landon stated, our floodplain management goes many years back. And through the leadership of City Council, it's always been very strong and aggressive with how we manage development here in Palm Coast. This timeline details when we actually were accepted into the National Flood Insurance Program. And why that's important is that a community must participate in the NFIP, so their citizens can actually get flood insurance, and that we're also eligible to get federal relief during natural disasters. The community rating system noted for May of 2004, the Class 7, the community rating system is a volunteer program. It's done through FEMA, and basically, that program rewards, as Mr. Landon stated, a reduction in flood insurance premiums for citizens in special flood hazard areas. So a Class 7, which was achieved in 2004, that was a 15% reduction. In 2006, we received our flood insurance rate maps that are effective today. 2008, our Unified Land Development Code was adopted. And we make reference to that because these ordinances are basically just being brought up to date. No new regulations, but always keeping our higher standards that we've had through the CRS program, the National Flood Insurance Program. And just to note some other dates, 2009, a Class 6, we improved to a Class 5 in 2014, and most recently, in May 2017, a Class 4, which translates into a 30% reduction. At the time we achieved that certification, we were only one of 12 communities in the United States that had that Class 4 or better. Most recently, in December 31, 2017, the Florida Building Code, the sixth edition, became effective. Now, why that's important is on the state level, the Florida Building Code has quickly come up to speed the importance of floodplain management regulations. And that's why you see in the accompanying ordinance of dealing with the Florida Building Code, because those higher standards had to be amended, and we have the ability to do that. And then the flood insurance rate maps, if it wasn't known by the general public, we do have new maps issued by FEMA, and they will become effective June 6. These sequence of events are important to why we're actually doing this ordinance. And as Mr. Landon stated, we do have a great relationship with the Florida Division of Emergency Management, and they've been working on for years a state model ordinance for communities across the state of Florida to ensure that they're meeting the National Flood Insurance Program minimum standards, but then also embracing floodplain management across Florida. And as part of that effort, they actually engage the City of Palm Coast and offer consulting services directly with us. And that's been tremendous, especially with all the technical amendments and making sure that we're meeting the standard of the National Flood Insurance Program. And just as I noted, we have to participate in that so our citizens can have flood insurance. And the purpose of why we're here today with these ordinances is that we're merging the model ordinance I noted, also with our existing regulations and the Florida Building Code, to make sure that our higher standards are kept and that we're basically keeping to the bar of our CRS program. Because of the design standards and development community that could be affected by this ordinance, we reached out to Fcard, which is Flagler County Association for Responsible Development. We had three meetings with them. We took in consideration their input, very thoughtful input, I must say, and very helpful. And we actually applied that as part of this ordinance adoption and draft. And we actually had, again, with the great partnership we have with the Florida Division of Emergency Management, they reviewed it, our CRS technical experts reviewed it. And they're actually found in the ordinance and found acceptable by the reviewing entities. And another benefit for FDM, when they're existing us, is that they actually are a reviewer on behalf of FEMA. They're accepted, and any ordinance that we do ultimately has to be found accountable by FEMA. So by having them reviewing it, it almost takes a step out of the process. We also found as staff that the ordinances are consistent with our comprehensive plan policies. And we, of course, brought this information to our Planning and Land Development Regulation Board at workshop and business meeting. And PLDRB recommended that City Council approve ordinance Section 1002 of the Land Development Code by a 6-0 vote. We did not bring Chapter 15, because that's not in their purview. And our recommendation to City Council, as noted by PLDRB, to approve ordinance associated with Chapter 10.02, and then also the technical amendments associated with Chapter 15 of the Code of Ordinances. And with that, staff's here for any questions or thoughts that you may have.
Questions, council?
I would just like to say that your hard work over the last 15 years is, if the back of the napkin math is right, decreased almost 70% of the premiums that were being paid in 2004. That's tremendous, so thank you for all the hard work that you do.
It's a team effort, thank you.
I'll now open it to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number 10? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 11, ordinance, Mr. Reshing.
Mayor, your last ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the city's Unified Land Development Code, repealing Section 10.02 Flood Damage Protection, Chapter 10, Environmental and Cultural Resource Protection, replacing it with new Section 10.02 Floodplain Management to clarify intent and reflect current development trends. Amending Section 14.02 Glossary to add revised and delete definitions relating to floodplain terminology. This ordinance provides for applicability, severability, codification, conflicts, and provides for an effective date.
Mayor, this is the second ordinance that was part of your previous presentation. We have no additional comments, but I would like to just add that, yes, it's a great team effort. We have them from the engineering to the planning. effort. We have them from the engineering to the planners to the building to, you name it. A lot of people involved in this, and the community. That's what makes it very successful. So thank you for that acknowledgement.
I'll open it to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Eleven, please do so at this time.
This ordinance says that you're going to get a decrease in flood insurance, and the people should get a decrease in flood insurance. How do you tell the insurance companies that they're entitled to insurance drops, that they should take a decrease in insurance premiums because of the rating we got? Insurance companies ain't that great to say, well, you're okay, we're going to drop your premiums down $20 or $30. If anything, they probably said, well, it's so great, we're going to increase it. So just in case you do get a flood, it's not going to cost us that much money. So where is the protection for the people of the city with the insurance companies? And how much are they going to get in the reduction? 5%, 3%, 2%, 10%? And when are we going to know if we're in a flood zone?
Next speaker. I'll now close public comment. If you could address Mr. Carroll's questions.
Absolutely. So the first question that I heard was about the discount. So the way the discount works for citizens of Palm Coast, the 30% reduction in your flood insurance premiums are for those properties in a special flood hazard area, which means a high-risk zone. For areas that, for properties in X zones, which are not in a high-risk zone, that's actually established by Congress. That's a flat rate. It's a preferred risk policy. When you get a flood insurance policy, it's reference your community, which ours is 120684, and with that comes your discount. So for any flood insurance, it's by FEMA, and so it should be relatively the same, depending on any service provider that you go to. And the last question I heard was, which floodplain do I live in? Do I live in a floodplain? And the whole state of Florida is in a floodplain. It's just different degrees of risk. So we actually encourage our citizens to contact your floodplain manager, myself, and we have three other floodplain managers in the city, and we will give you that information. We will actually give you a determination so you can take that and go to your insurance provider.
What portion of the city is in a special flood zone?
Well, with the new maps, we haven't calculated that as of yet. Basically, there's, if you can imagine this, where you have your swamp areas, those are the high-risk areas. With the new maps, the saltwater canals will now be a special flood hazard area. So for the most part, that's kind of the guiding principle if you want to know generally the scope of the floodplain that are special flood hazard areas.
Okay. No other questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second?
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to the consent agenda item number. I will open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make a public comment on Agenda Item Number Twelve, Fourteen, we removed Thirteen earlier and voted on it, Fourteen, Fifteen, or Sixteen, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comments. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second?
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Okay. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, which is a presentation of certificates to graduating students of the City of Palm Coast Citizen Academy class. Cindy.
May I present the certificates?
Oh, it's the blue shirts time.
All right, Mayor and City Council, I'm Cindy Lane, Communications and Marketing Manager, and I'm excited to present the 43rd graduating class of the Palm Coast Citizens Academy. Mayor Holland always likes to remind us that she was in the first class, and she told them when she spoke, 43rd, so. So I think most of you had a chance to meet them. I can't remember if we number, about 27, I think, this graduating class. It was a great group. They hung with us and came every week in spite of a little bit of rain on utility and public works night. And I told them that they had to come to a council meeting. I didn't know it would be, well, it's not that long, an hour, an hour and 15. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call up each graduate, and the mayor's going to give you your certificate, and then I'm going to have you just gather here, and we're going to do a group photo. So you want to stand over here, maybe, since they mostly seem here? So we have Joseph Benencasa. Martha Butler. Catherine Curtis.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Danny Danforth. And Sharon Danforth. Lisa DeAndrea. Virginia Elgin. Gertrude Hannah. Bertha Harrison. I think Ryan Kendall may be absent. He did not make it to fire last night, but he came to every other class, so. Emily Kershaw. William Mania. Cindy Marcucci.
Thank you.
And Mike Marcucci. Tina Mangiardo. Becky Osgood. And Tom Osgood.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Katia Silvero. James Smeaton. And Sally Smeaton. Dale Wiersma. And Betty Wiersma. Mike Wynans. We got out of our alphabetical. And Debbie Wynans. So look at this very fine group of our citizens, and I want to let all of you know that you are now Palm Coast ambassadors and very happy to have you as graduates of the program. So what I'm going to have you do is kind of make a group here with some rows, with shorter people, and the council will come down and stand around you for the photo. That's too crazy. All right, squish together like you like each other. I am so proud of you. You guys were such a good group. I do, but some are easier than. Yeah, we used to get yellow. This is Palm Coast blue. Sorry, I missed it. All right, so Betty, I can't see your face. Can I see everyone's face? We're close. Okay, Mrs. Shipley, you could squeeze just a little. Perfect. Okay, we got it. We got it. All right, one, two, three. I'm going to pick a couple. Get a good one. All right, congratulations.
Shemama.
Okay, we'll now move to the remainder of the public participation. This is a moment where anyone can make public comment on items not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin. Mr. Mc, are you, McDonald, we've already had public speaking at the beginning. You chose that opportunity to speak, so.
Good evening, George Mayo, Palm Coast. I don't know if anybody saw this past Sunday's News Journal fee frenzy. I brought this up to the county commission meeting yesterday. What it is, is they're specifically speaking about three CDD's developments, one in Port Orange, two in Daytona, that asked for, both were, two were multimillion dollar and one is a multi-billion dollar corporation, ISC, International Speedway, where they built the pavilion in Port Orange, ISC, of course, one Daytona in Daytona, and Tanger Outlets. They asked and received multimillion dollar money from both County Commission, Volusia, and the City of Daytona for infrastructure. I am not against CDD's, CDD's asking for money. Growth is good. But what they went ahead and did now is ask for user fee and enhanced amenity fees, which I have been to both one Daytona and the outlets, and they have small stickers on the door, which means they are charging up to 1% extra for the privilege of shopping in their stores. It is a tax by any of the name, but it's not a tax because the governments do not collect any money from that. But what they are doing is just like the airlines and motels, having fees, tacking fees on you. I agree with the writer in here. This is important to me, that we should have another tax. I'm sure if you ask the citizens in Palm Coast for a 1% sales tax addition, I do not think it would pass. But what they are doing is charging up to 1% on any of their products and/or restaurants' amenities to do that. The local government could not say no. A judge did not rule against these amenity fees. What I am asking is I ask the county commission, going further on, any CDD's, if they come in, have the council and/or our planning and zoning board, or whoever reviews these, at least ask these people if this is what you're going to do. Are you going to add an amenity fee on anything that you put in? At least be aware of it, and then make your decisions on whether to approve, why a multi-billion dollar corporation, a multimillion corporation uses public money and then charges these extra fees for the same taxpayers that gave them the money, which they repaid, but gave them the money to allow them to produce whatever that is. So I just want you to be aware of it. If you are, okay. But going forward here, just know this is a sign of the future. So hopefully we can stem it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Thank you for your comments. I was not aware of that. I've not read that article. So we'll look into it, but thank you. Okay, discussion by City Council of matters not on the agenda. I am going to start with Councilmember Shipley.
I just have one thing. I know Mr. Carr had got up and spoke earlier, and we talked about it a little bit at the workshop, and I wanted to get something on a workshop regarding that. I have met with the residents there, and they have an idea that might actually work, so I wanted to do that. Plus, add into it, Mr. Nobel had mentioned something he had talked about years ago that might help with the pollution there, or whatever, even sound in that area. So even to add that to the list and put that on a workshop, when I met with the people, it was the first time that everyone was in agreement on one thing that they thought would work. And I've actually seen it work in my hometown, so I thought maybe we could talk about it, see if you like the idea. Hopefully, just one more thing we can try to look at, to work on that.
I think that's coming. We had directed staff to look at Mr. Nobel's comments and bring it back.
It's actually part of your strategic action plan, and so it was one of those that we're going to present to you as to whether you want to put it on the priority list. If you want to have a separate workshop just on this item, you know, I can put that on the agenda, too, and Ms. Shipley can present her proposal.
Well, I mean, I.
No, I don't think this was part of the strategic plan. This was something that came up separate from comments by Mr. Carr. So I think what we requested, and you're right, it was in the midst, oh, excuse me, it was in the midst of all that, and it seemed like it could have. But I think what we were asking for is just a separate agenda item at a workshop, just to discuss this. I don't think we need a special meeting, or it's not going to, I don't really think it's going to take that long. Just if we can get it on the agenda so we can, on the workshop, so we can throw out a few ideas and see if something sticks before budget comes up, so that might be something we can.
Well, I think what was on the strategic plan that we did agree to was some plantings and looking at the Florida Park.
This is more ideas about the traffic. I love the idea that Mr. Nobel had with the.
That's right. You're right. You're right. So yes, the beautification was on the strategic plan. This is more of, yeah, this is a traffic issue, not, not part of that.
It's up to you. We can put it on the agenda if you all would like.
I would just maybe ask you to bring forth the residents' ideas in advance, so staff can.
Yes, I will send an email to Landon. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Clufus?
Absolutely. Two things. I have something similar to that that I'm putting together, and it has to do with healthy initiatives. I was inspired by the Healthy Challenge, and I've had some health fanatics bring things that other cities are doing that I think we can incorporate into the city and do good things. But also, I wanted to say congratulations to all of the Citizens Academy graduates, and I wanted to reinforce the idea of mywaterpledge.com. You guys are all great ambassadors of the city, and that is something that you can do that will really help us out. So thank you, guys.
Okay. Vice Mayor Tough? And I don't have anything either.
We're on a roll.
You know, I usually talk about some events coming up, but I really, tonight, would just like to highlight some things I thought have happened recently. They're very, very exciting. Two Fridays ago, we had the grand opening of, at the Community Center. And wow, what an event. I mean, totally exceeded my expectations, and my expectations were fairly high as far as how many people would come out and how exciting. I can tell you that Parks and Recreation have been very busy since then. A lot of people coming in. They have developed numerous new programs as a result of the space, and has really energized the whole program from toddlers all the way to seniors. And that was very exciting. And then, as we talked about trying in, you know, breaking in the new community center, the State of a City address today, Mayor Holland, you hit it out of the park, in my opinion. It was great. It was a great presentation and was very proud, made me very proud. But I also will tell you that, as you pointed out numerous times, the coordination between staff and their slideshow and your talking points, I hadn't seen it before and I was going, wow. And I'm, and I know I've got very talented people that do this, so I just wanted to say how proud I was and what a great job and great turnout and very, very proud. And then I'd like to finish my comments by the little video that ended the program that I bet most of people have not seen and something staff put together that concluded the mayor's comments today that I think is worthwhile seeing again. So Beau, take it from here.[1538.93]